We call Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, May 7th, 2018, 6:30 PM. Members of the City Council are present. Others include James Johnson, our Clerk Treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our City Manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of April 16th, 2018. That would entertain the motion.
Someone?
Motion to be made, is there a second?
One second.
Made and seconded, discussion on the minutes. Does anyone, and those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, ice habit, motion carries. Next item is comments by members of the public. Before we get into that, I want to just have a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank all the people who came out for Green Up Day on Saturday. Just thank everyone for the annual Green Up Day participants. Also, a few months back, the city supported a grant that was applied for by NVDA. It was an EPA brownfield grant, and it was between St. John's Berry and Newport. And I believe the total was, the total of the grant was $600,000 for the, for the whole Northeast Kingdom. And NVDA was awarded that grant. So it's for brownfield cleanup, depending on what community needs brownfield cleanup items. And then, the only other thing, about three weeks ago, the City Manager, City Clerk Treasurer, and myself went down to Montpelier where we were presented a resolution by the House and Senate honoring the city's centennial. This was a joint resolution that was read on the House floor, and we had a chance to personally present the Speaker of the House and the Governor a centennial portrait, but it was one that Victoria Mathiason had taken the time and put on a hand-painted of the state capitol. And so, and she signed it for them. And so that was, so we received that resolution. And then, that's all I have before we, and then, I believe James Miriam had signed up for public comment.
So on the agenda, I would encourage the City Council to take the upcoming universal recycling changes seriously, to make, take steps to begin real composting in the city, whatever the system ends up being. I know there's been some study, but that real steps need to be taken, especially now as it appears there's going to be a commercial facility coming into Albany, which, as it's within 20 miles, would trigger the need for the city to do something, whatever it is, something. There are a lot of advantages, and I would encourage also the city to consider the universal accessibility of such a program and the greater ease of composting relative to recycling, because it creates effectively by itself something that is useful both to the city and to nearly every resident, that is turf builder, in effect. So, we want greener lawns, we want to reduce our fertilizer bills, and we want to get rid of stuff that would otherwise just be paid to go in the landfill. And there are a number of ways to do it, but that should be seen as an opportunity. But thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, the next is Children's Parade follow-up, Diane Nikoslamming. And I believe they have a PowerPoint presentation.
Yes, there's a one, this, it's somewhat like a video, but it is PowerPoint of pictures, if you want to adjust them. It's just about a minute, and then, that's okay. It was a very rainy day, as I'm sure some of you know. So that was just a little snapshot, so to speak, of the event that, on Thursday. And we just wanted to come as part of an opportunity to answer any questions that you might have about it, as well as to just present a very small thank you to the City Council for, you know, waiving those fees and that, for this event. It was, in the last several years, it's been about 500 participants. This year, but even with the rain, I would say it was at least 200 that came. And so, it was, I think, a lot of fun from everyone. Kids were very engaged, families were very engaged, and it was an opportunity to share the different resources for them as well.
Thank you.
Diane, can you, since you were our first official person to go through the process, can you talk a little bit, just quickly, about what you thought of the process going through the...
So I certainly can understand why a process is needed, because as being a city, that you get lots of requests in and out. And so, I think just your help with it was critical. You helped to navigate that, and so, and then also running back and forth in terms of questions and things like that. So, I think it was pretty seamless, the services that were present at the parade with the kids, just really loved seeing the fire, the emergency vehicles, as well as the policemen along the route, and that, as well as the rec department staff. So it was just, I think, the, it, each year, it has, so, you know, my first year here, it was kind of the old way where we sent letters requesting, then each year, then Andy, for a couple of years, was helping to kind of fine-tune and make sure that we had things listed very specifically, and was thinking through what would an emergency look like, how are we going to alert people? And then, coming through to this, this year, with the process of the application being, pretty much, I mean, I pulled old applications in order to fill it out. So, I think it makes sense, and, and to me, it also makes sense that you acknowledge how much it costs to do these events, because somebody's paying the cost, and that. And so, for us, as really a nonprofit trying to bring kids together and families together that might be from other areas, it, to me, is a shining star here in Newport, that we have had that support from you all.
Do you have any suggestions on anything we could do differently in the future to make it easier, or...
Um, I think that, well, I'm just trying to think from, from my point of view, and also trying to balance it out, because we're putting in our request at one of your busiest times, because it's when you're having your town meetings, it's having voting, and those transitions. So it's, what I would think in the future is if you and I begin that conversation sooner, and also understanding, we, we didn't know how to spread the word, because we didn't want to assume you were going to grant us the waiving of those fees, and we didn't have a funding source. So, it's kind of balancing that timeline, so that we're not putting it at your busiest time, and then we're also aware enough to spread it.
Yeah, this year was a little bit funky, because we were working on passing that policy. So it was a little bit delayed. The policy does call for a two-month lead time on that, so I think that that would probably be really helpful. We thought you guys were great, too, even, so initially, the children's celebration was supposed to start in, was supposed to begin in, at the gateway, and then end at the, at Gardner Park. Obviously, for rain, it was the day before, we were kind of making the decision on, are we going to have the parade? We did decide to have the parade, but if we didn't, we wanted to make sure we had time to call off the staff that were planning on being there in support of that. But we decided to go ahead with the parade and just did a little switch. We had a little bit of extra prep work in the morning to come in and help set up the gym for these guys, but they met us first thing in the morning, and we made it work, and everything was great. So thank you for your responsiveness, too, and your staff's professionalism, and making sure everybody was where they should be at the right time, and...
And hopefully, we returned the gym the way it was.
Yes, great, yeah. Does Council have any questions for this debrief?
Um, no, I think it went off very well. I was wondering if you were even going to get the parade in, and I'm looking at the weather right now, and I could see, I could see the rain marching in, marching in, marching in. I said, I wonder if they're even starting, starting, and when I found out that you had started, but you got wet.
Yeah, pretty much, it's just happened at the time.
But no, I think it went off very well, what I just told and informed them. I also want to thank our staff for, you know, basically, because it took, what, five of our staff wanting to get the gym, with their, with the help of those folks, to get everything set up, because we know we can't always rely on the weather. And that's the one thing. So that's all I have, just to thank everybody. Anything else from council members?
Thank you much for making the time to be here.
Yes. Okay, the next item, Kingdom Swim event request, go white. And we have just two?
Yep.
Okay, so, Kingdom Swim, this is their 10th, they're celebrating their 10th year doing this event in Newport. The event has evolved a little bit and changed over time, so notice in your packet that it's a little bit smaller this year. Phil's taken some different routes, or as far as we're concerned, probably each portion of it. So you can see on your memo that they have done, Phil has done his $25 deposit, and then he's requesting $410 worth of lead fees for the event at Crowdy Beach. And the event at Crowdy Beach is just the swim, it's not the pig roast portion that we've seen in the past, or the swimmers dinner down at the gateway. So significantly less requests this year. Last year, with the larger event and the three kind of different prongs in it, City approved, City Council approved a contribution of $3,848 to cover staff time and green space, and Kingdom Games contributed $500. So, can you turn that over to you, Phil, you want to give them a little rundown?
First off, I think it's more than right for the city to figure out what it costs to support events. When we started Kingdom Swim, there was a kind of a sense of a renaissance, because we had lost the Traverse Say, and Chamber was very big with the Aquafest. So when we started at Kingdom Swim, it was, there was a lot of work by the city, as well as by the Chamber, and to turn it into an Aquafest and a full celebration of summertime. This year, we've decided to focus on the swim itself, and focus on partnering with Dina to do the Friday and Saturday night portions that we've been building in the past. We used to do a swimmers and kayakers pasta dinner under the gateway, which required the use of a city tent. I was trying to build the pig roast and party at Crowdy, and trying to lure somebody else to take it over, but I couldn't. So, I know some people ended up working all night, doing the food and stuff. And with partnership in the future, I think there might be an option for that. But I figured this year, I'd like to minimize my request to the city, and work with Dina to do the two dinners. So we're only asking for the beach and the pavilion, those are fixed assets, there's no tents, there's no band baggery, there's none of the other things that we were, had asked for last year. And I've given you a two-page flyer about Kingdom, oh, about Kingdom Games itself. We organize over 25 days of running bike swimming events, and we have, over the years, had significant support from the community to do that. I would describe Kingdom Games, we are a small business that pays taxes, but we donate all profits to charities, and we also are committed to purchasing all products and services from local businesses whenever possible. So we believe in the relationship with folks in the city. I've listed the folks who, one year or another, sometimes all of the years, have supported us. And as you look at it, you'll see a little bit of support from a lot of people makes these games possible. So, $410 request is a big request, and it would be very much appreciated.
So, Jess, you sat down with Phil and went through the event policy that we have?
Yes, we did. So we sat down, and what I'd really like to see is council to use in our event policy, similar to what we did with the children's parade, go ahead and take all of the events that we have coming through, through that checklist. So, the one that I'm referencing, you guys have a copy of the events policy, I'll leave it to you. So that is, under the policy section on the second page, so there's seven bulleted points there. I'm sure, I'm hoping you guys have some time to consider these, given that these are the criteria that we measure all of the events up against, and when deciding our level of support. Council want me to walk through those, or do you guys want to have some discussion on that?
Pam, you might want to walk through it, since it's still, you know, we are new, and just...
Yeah, yeah. So, the policy portion says that, based on the number of criteria met, along with strategic considerations and the merit of the request as determined by council, criteria is given to event requests that meet the following criteria. So the first one is, does the event take place in Newport City limits? Yes. The event is compatible with compliments and is not in competition with events hosted by the City of Newport? Yes, it's a compliment to what we're doing, and does not compete. The event is open to the public, accessible to Newport City residents, and provides services in a nondiscriminatory manner. So when I look at that one, I think of things like the children's parade, where folks are kind of coming out. It's accessible to all demographics, family units, things like that. I don't necessarily think this is a home run for Kingdom Games, because it's a, as Phil has mentioned before, it's not necessarily a spectator sport. He's not turning folks away, so he's not excluding anyone, but it's just not necessarily on the spectrum of that one. I don't think it's necessarily a home run for that. So, the next one, the majority of funds raised at charity or fundraising events are used to support specific programs and services that benefit Newport City residents. Do you want to speak to that, Phil, what you mentioned?
I think last year, we raised $2,000 for NWA, and they've been the target of our fundraising for a couple of years now.
Okay, so NWA is a regional coverage, which includes Newport City, not restricted to Newport City, but includes Newport City. The event or organization is addressing, is addressing a recognized community need. I'm not sure I see that one fitting here, except for the fact that it's an event, it may be happening in town. But when I think of a recognized community need, I think of something like, this hits a little bit close to home, but I know that we need a new playground, so a fundraising event that would be addressing or fundraising for the playground, I would think is a community need. The, there's a substantial return on investment measured by economic impact or other tangible benefits associated with the partnership. Do you want to speak about that?
Sure, I think over the years, we've run about 1,000 swimmers from around North America and around the world even, and most of them have swum two times, on average. So the, every swimmer comes with a kayaker, friends and family. So I think that the community need to promote tourism, recreational tourism, is a big driver for why I do what I do.
So when we're looking at a substantial return on investment measured by economic impact, that, or other tangible benefits, that's the fielded in the community businesses, you know, receiving the financial benefit. So, I think there, again, I think there is some of those things. I think certainly when Phil brings those swimmers to town, he's doing some of the, there is a little bit of an economic impact, as much as the really huge events, I think of the softball tournaments, because they're hitting all the stores. I do see that the Kingdom Swim is, they're feeding the folks at Dina's, so it's giving Dina business, but it's not necessarily covering the entire area, it's a little bit self-contained. So that was something that I thought about while running through this. And again, this is your policy, I'm just putting my thoughts on it. I'm hoping that you guys are having these similar, or, you know, some thoughts about these kinds of things in your own opinion. And feel free to interrupt me if you would like to evaluate this on your own.
I'd be happy to interrupt, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, yes.
So, the years that I have participated, volunteered at Kingdom Swim, I've noticed that the campground has been completely overflowing, which I would think is a big economic impact on the city itself by all of those campsites. So that's one, one huge one that I see. And also, the return swimmers, I think people come, and I've heard a lot of the swimmers who come through the food line say, "Oh, this is such a beautiful area, I would love to come back, I'm going to come here on vacation." And so, it promotes a long-term tourism benefit. It's not just the, you know, like the softball people buying a six-pack of beer at Little G's. It's, I think it has a much longer-term, widespread economic impact.
Okay. Any else want to touch on, or are you thinking of doing this?
My thing is, is that we always preach about, oh, we've got to promote our lake.
Yes.
How many events do we have that promote our lake? And I noticed reading through this, that they've opened up the Neil at the East Side to the public. And there's a lot of people here that kayak and swim, who might want to just intermingle with these people, say hello, why do you do this? So I see a big benefit, I think it does bring people here, it might bring people back. You might find that one businessman that's into this, who says, "I'd like to bring my business here." You know, so there are behind-the-scenes benefits, you know, it isn't always about who's going to make money off of it immediately. So, yeah, I see a lot of benefit promoting it.
Yeah, and I, I think so, too, and I didn't even, you know, that is a recognized community need. When I think about, I didn't think of that one as a recognized community, but as soon as you said that, a lot of the task force work that we've been doing, that is a big one, that in the presence back to the lake, we utilize our water, so that's a good point, see, I didn't think of that. That's why this is the evaluation process, that's why I'm hoping you guys will have this conversation. So, yes, and I also think as far as the economic benefit, you could make a case for every event that comes forth. There is some, somebody's going to go into a store, somebody's going to go to a restaurant, so you have to consider all of these criteria on a spectrum. How much of that are we getting, you know, compared to relative events? So that's something to just keep in your mind, too, as we're rushing through this. There, okay, so that's the substantial return on investment. The event organizers' experience qualifications and responsiveness promote a positive working relationship with the city. Phil's been doing this a long time. He, he has his marketing and some other elements of his events that are just fine-tuned machines. It does take a little bit of work for us to go through this process. In fact, I think our first meeting with Phil was in January, and I probably put, myself, I probably put at least 10 hours in the process of all of this, which is okay, it was just a little bit laborious, not quite as fine-tuned as others. So, that's my two cents on that, the working relationship portion, only because my time is, I feel very bread thin. So, but Phil definitely has his games under control.
And one thing that we didn't mention is Phil is going to pay for the police. The police time, because we have to call people in to be on the boat. It's not like we can take officers who are already on duty. So Phil has agreed to pay the $1,250, estimated, the $250 for the boat, because that has to cover the gas, and whatever. But he's paying, you know, the other thousand, so it's $1,250 to cover the police.
Yes, so that was the estimate that he got from the police chief, that wasn't included in the ask.
No, no, but I told him, I would know that he is paying for the PD.
They do a great job out on the water.
So, those are the seven criteria. I put myself out there a little bit, and that was the thing I didn't want to do, that's why this was hopefully a council policy, but I'm trying to help you guys kind of get into the process of thinking these things through. So, take that with what you will. And so the bottom line is Phil's ask is $435, or no.
$410.
The ask is $410, he has paid $25, so it adds up to $435 total.
Right, so he's asking for $410. So, any other questions from council members on this?
I would move to waive the $410, and thank Phil very much for having this event here and bringing so many people to town.
So a motion was made, is there a second?
I'll second it, because I believe they worked very hard to come to this, this point.
So a motion made and seconded, discussion. The, depending on how the vote goes, I think we need to start accounting for this. So it needs to come out of a line item in the budget, because it's not budgeted. So I'm recommending, because this starts the new fiscal year, so it should come out of the council special items. That's the only place we can take it out of. So we got to start keeping it accounting, since it's not budgeted. And so I'd recommend that we just move the money over from the council's special items in the budget to cover the cost.
So it'll go into our...
It would have to go into recreation.
Yeah, okay.
Because we got to start accounting for this, because it does come out of the different budgets. And so I think that's the proper way of accounting for it. That's just me, I don't know how other council members feel, but I just feel we, we got to start accounting for all the fees that we waive until we, you know, in, in the budget. It's just an accounting thing for me, you know, we need to track.
So Mr. Mayor, I think that, given the economic impact on the Recreation Department with all of the extra campsites, it would make sense to take it from the Recreation line item, since they will, it'll be a gain, not, there will be no monetary loss.
I would be curious to know if there was an additional, you know, that, we run the campground as a business, and it's full for many, many weekends out of the year, and July 30th is a pretty hot season. So I would be an advocate not to have it coming out of the rec department's budget, because A, we didn't have it in the expense lines for the budget, and we've already created next year's budget. But I also think that that would be additional revenue, so that $10 that we're missing out on could be put towards our operating budget in the future. So, we need to chop off our already short shoestrings.
So that's how it should work, so that if something, if something is taken from you, it's, it's replaced in some manner, and what you proposed actually would work for the bottom line. So, your busy season of camping is attributable to a variety of things. And Phil, you could always do a survey to find out how many people are camping. I don't know if we know.
I think that would be helpful, and same thing with the East Side, if it's open to the public, that may be a helpful figure for me to have, to know exactly how accessible it is to the people, how many people are really...
Yeah, we're going to be advertising. So we were advertising for the pig roast party at Crowdy, and we had probably 100 swimmers and kayakers on the beach, and then 100 members of the community. Now, we also had, under that scenario, we had a $5 cover, just to cover your the band, and pay for your beer, but not buy the pig. And then we charged $15 for the pig. So, you know, but I think it was about an even miss, public and swimmers, which was exciting to me. I mean, I think there should be a day when we see 1,000 people on Crowdy Beach. But that's not this year, and I understand that. And I think it's going to be exciting to look at Dina.
I think what we're, what we want to is to be looking at these as their economic boosters, and we're saying that this is bringing money into the community. What we don't want is to be taking that money out of the community, also robbing Peter to pay Paul. It's supposed to be bringing those additional dollars. It's supposed to be bringing those additional dollars in, not just changing them over into different hands.
Anything else than all those in favor of?
I think there's one hand.
Excuse me, I, I didn't see it, I will call on people. I saw the hand, but I was wondering.
Sorry, I just didn't want you to call the vote before they had the opposite.
No, I saw the hand out of my eye as I looked at Dan, I saw the hand go up, so.
My swimmer Laura Valley of Skid, and I, a kayaker, have been doing this since day one, as my husband, my daughter and her family have manned buoy 1A in the swim since the beginning. I have to tell you that every single year, when I'm on the beach after kayaking, before, after, I've had people come up to me and say, "This is the first time I've been in this area, it's beautiful, I'm coming back for my vacation." So Jess, to your point, it isn't only that day that we get the economic benefit, we get it long after that. And many a time, I've had people come up to me and say, "I came back for this, I came back for that." So I consider myself a long-termer in this swim. It's absolutely fabulous, Phil does a wonderful job, and I would urge everyone to take advantage of it. It may not be a spectator sport, but if you've got a kayak and you want a kayak, or you have a powerboat and you want to man one of the buoys, please come and help, it's so much fun.
Yes.
I also helped out Phil for the last couple of years, and just, it's a lot of fun, and I can attest to the same sort of things that you mentioned. But I also wanna say, I have property in, in town that's seasonal, and I have returned people because of that swim. And that's not just one swim, but there's several swims, but they have come back now for three years in a row, so. There's, we're here too benefiting from it, you know, a little person with a little Airbnb.
Okay, anything else? Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Garbutt.
What are you? I have to say, you don't, you don't get paid by Phil. Okay, it's not really grounds for abstaining, but I'll let you abstain. And so now, before we go on, let me decide about the, the accounting aspect.
I'll be there.
Because there was one member who, I really think that it needs to come out of a line item in the budget, we have to account for these. And so I think, I think we should have a motion to move that money from the council line item to account for Phil, for what the fees we just waived. That I think we need to do for accounting purposes, because it is taxpayers' money that we are, it may not sound like a lot of money, but it is taxpayers' money, and we need to account for it in the budget. So a motion been made, is there a second? Second discussion.
Well, I'd like to point out that it's not real money.
Right. It's all, yes, it's real money.
So if you had somebody waiting in line to rent that same space and they couldn't because it was already being rented for free, that's one thing, but this isn't money, this is space.
So, I'd like to address that, the fees that we have, the councils approve, are to cover the long-term maintenance of these things. So when Phil mentioned that these are items that are already there, they don't require any additional labor or anything like that, any additional effort, the pavilion that he's using and the waterfront that is there require many hours of work to maintain them, even annually, to give them paint jobs and to clean up the sea view and to make them looking beautiful. If we were to charge one entity that comes forward and looks to use those things, full price of replacing that thing when it needs replacing, then we would, that would never work. So what we do is we collect these fees over short-term periods of time from a collection of users that are contributing to their long-term care. So these fees are important, even though they are not actual dollars, the actual dollars that we would see are the money that we have to spend on things like the playground, the things that we're always scraping for. So we need to have accountability for these things and a cap for these things, because they are missed revenue for us.
Well, I understand your point, and I would rather it come out of council special funds than something else that's going to have a negative impact on anyone, but I've always said that I choose to live in Newport because of the services provided, and recreation is a huge part of that. So as a taxpayer, I am happy to pay for the upkeep of the beach, of the pavilion, of the park. I feel like that's part of what I get as a taxpayer in Newport, and I don't expect the fees of Parks and Rec to fully cover that at all, but thank you for the explanation.
Then anything else? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is the Rotary Tree presentation. We have Michelle Tariq, Tarek, sorry, sorry, Tarek, here, and Stan Chaw, and they have a presentation.
So I think in your packets is the memorandum of understanding for your review, and Stan has just a quick little PowerPoint that he'd like to share, just to kind of give you the visualization of where his passion came from and then what we're looking at. You also received a map that shows where the plants are, the trees that we're looking to do, that map in front here.
This map here?
Yeah.
No, no.
It's not that map?
No, it's right here in my folder.
Oh, I was gonna say, yeah, this is the Causeway.
It looks like a map.
Yeah, it's not the Causeway. That's why I was wondering, we need to get that map. Jess is getting it.
That'll teach you guys to put me on the agenda more than place in.
That looks better.
So basically, the Newport Rotary has applied for a grant, and the Newport Rotary itself has agreed to match that grant. And so, and the Newport Rotary Board of Directors has agreed and given its blessing moving forward with the memorandum of understanding as it's presented to you folks tonight. And also, you know, is excited about this because one of the Rotary Internationals' goals this year is that every Rotarian plants a tree. And so it really aligns nicely with the Rotary International goal of increasing the number of trees in the, throughout the country, throughout the world. So Stan, if you wanna show your.
And also, we thought of it as a way of presenting a centennial gift to, to the city, to, yeah, let me explain why I've got a picture of Washington DC up here. By the way, as I mentioned, I do own a property in town. We've been coming to Newport for 30 years, my wife and I, and our family, three kids. And now my wife and I are retired up here for the last five years, so. But, I'm originally from Washington DC, and I grew up with the Cherry Blossom Festival every year, that draws in so many people, I mean, billions of dollars really, during that nine days or whatever, the cherries, cherry trees are blossoming. Also, I happened to have lived in Japan for 10 years, and Korea for four, and this cherry blossom, in fact, you know, these cherry trees were given as a gift to Washington from, from the Japanese in the 1920s. Anyhow, this is a big, big festival time in those areas, down in Washington, Japan and Korea, when everybody comes out to see the cherry blossoms and spend money.
Now we recognize that we're not DC. We, we get that.
All I'll do is hit the.
But I think, you know, one thing is Stan's passion about the beauty that trees can bring and what it can do for really improving the scenery, and can, can be a draw, so.
And here's, here's the thing, every time I drive through town, I think of Washington, I think of the tidal basin, because we have the water all around us, we've got the river and the lake, and let's see.
Hit the space bar.
Oh, the space bar, yeah, thank you. Oops. There's just another picture of Washington's DC. Let me see if I can go back, I think I.
Here, not that button.
I wanna go back.
So the hope is, the group, there's a group of us, so Roger, Stan, myself, a couple other Rotarians, and Jessica have met several times to go over the, the best placement around garden or park, that really would be something that could pop. And so what, and Jim also was a part of these conversations as well. And so what we came up with is if we could line the, the road on both sides with the serviceberry trees, and also behind the bandstand, so it gets us back up now.
Yeah, let me, go ahead. So I'm really thinking that we could have this sort of effect in, in the town. I'm looking here, and then a peninsula, and perhaps we could have, you know, those kind of trees all over the town here.
So, so what we settled on was serviceberry trees.
Let me tell you why, yeah. I was doing all kinds of research on the cherry blossoms. I even wrote, and by the way, Japan has a cold climate, Korea's just as cold as here, and they grow these cherry trees. I, I wrote to the tourist offices over there, but anyhow, to make a long story short, I kind of just did an abrupt change and thought, we need to get a native tree here, one that can withstand the climate, used to this climate, and serviceberry came, came to mind after some research. And let me tell you, let's see if I can, we got a serviceberry tree. Let me tell you a little bit, there's a backstory to the serviceberry tree, I think it's real interesting. Being from below the Mason Dixon line here, I didn't realize that sometime, I guess bodies are, were put on hold if there, if somebody died in the wintertime, and then you got a certain time in the spring that you bury the bodies. Well, that's where it got its name here, serviceberry, because it's one of the first trees to come out when the, the ground falls and you could bury somebody, the tree blossoms. Then it's also called the shad, shad bush or chad tree, because that's when the shad start making their way up the rivers, when this tree blossoms. It's also called the june berry, because in June it has a berry. It's got a lot of different names. The Canadians call it the suscatun, and they love eating the cherry, the berries from the tree.
So humans can eat the berry?
The Canadians are crazy about it, yes. In fact, the guy that's just right across the border sells all the fruit, he sells them, we try them out.
So in the spring, it's that beautiful white that we showed, and it also turns really.
And the fall, it has this brilliant red color to the leaves. And then, there's the berry, and it looks huge there, they're not the size of watermelons really, they're even smaller than a blueberry. But it, again, we got.
So the tree is, is really native to the area, they're a hardy tree, I don't know if you wanna speak a little bit to their hardiness and.
The tree that we're considering, it's, we're gonna grab them out of Canada, it's the Canadian serviceberry as opposed to the American one, just because these are grown in a zone three climate as we are, so that way we know, we're gonna put that investment in, the tree will, will stand our weather, and, and the wind pattern coming in off the lake.
Yeah, so it's resistant, there's so many reasons to plant a tree, number one, I mean, I think we all know environmentally, it, I think we help the wild, wildlife, provide shade, near the water is gonna provide a little cooling for the fish there in the water, of course, the erosion control and stormwater runoff, there's a list of reasons why we want to plant a tree. But I think, number one, what I'm looking at aesthetically for the town and economically, you know, I think in the long run, we could have something here where people are gonna come in to see these blossoms and spend some money, just as we're talking about with Phil's project.
That slide is, no, it's not up there.
Some people would see.
Oh, yeah, no. So what it is, is, and we can pass this to you and show folks, we don't know exactly how many trees we're gonna plant, because we need to contact Digsafe, we need to find out, you know, the spacing and that, but what we wanna do is we want to be able to plant them close enough that we can create that little bit of a canopy when we kind of flow. If that makes sense.
One way of describing is if you're going, years ago, if you went down the Causeway, say this way down the Causeway, it was all lined, I don't remember as a kid, they were lined with elm trees. And we actually have just one elm tree left on the Causeway, and it's that one tree that you see.
Right.
And this is why it would be nice to have this line down the Causeway, be like a canopy and.
Especially with that pop of white in the spring, and then the color in the, in the fall, so. So do you folks have any questions for us around what we presented?
I saw, Stan, you had some phases up there.
Those phases are from the former vision.
Didn't quite match up to what we're talking about here. I just threw this one up here too, because that's the bike trail, not that I'm looking to do the bike trail, but just can see the effect there of our bike trail and what it could be if we had it lined.
But you could almost picture that as being the Causeway.
Exactly.
Widen it up to be the Causeway.
That's why I wanted to.
Maybe not quite as, but.
Right. I wanted to mention that. By the way, I went to a tree conference this last week down in Montpelier, and they mentioned that in comparison studies, cities that have the trees, more trees in their town, more revenue in comparison studies. So that, there's really some data there showing that. They happened to, it's funny, because they happened to have a workshop talking about great landscape trees, and serviceberry was the first one they put up on this slide, and mentioned the serviceberry.
And the Newport Rotary is gonna be working with the interact clubs, and Derby Junior High has an early act, early act club, right? Early act.
Is that early?
Yeah, it's early.
High school's interact.
And the high school and Lake Region also is starting up an interact. So we're going to make this a service project with the Rotarians as well as the kiddos in those clubs. And so, you know, that's where a lot of the labor is gonna come from, also the spring cleaning that will happen every year, you know, it'll be a service project, so we're gonna get youth involved. You know, and one of the things in this region that the Northeast Kingdom Collaborative is looking to do is really do leader development. And so the fact that we in this area have three pipelines to Rotarians, to future Rotarians, is pretty exciting. So the Rotary, we as, as Rotarians are really excited about this, and we hope that this is something that we can move forward, but.
We really wanted to get the youth involved somehow to, to build that ownership and the sense of pride that they're participating in something like this, if we could get these trees planted. Just one last thing, I guess, as far as what I wanted to mention, is that, you know, Hard Works known as the town that food saved, have you heard that? And there's even a book about it. There's a town in New Hampshire that has a big lilac festival, and down in Virginia, my wife and I went to a daffodil festival in one of the small towns down there. Wilmington, North Carolina, has its azalea festival, tons of people come. Of course, we're on a much smaller scale, but I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe serviceberries could be.
We could have a serviceberry festival.
Newport, you know, the town's in, like, serviceberries or something like that. It's just another avenue to bring in economic revenue to the town.
Because Montreal has a tulip festival that they had to.
Who does?
Montreal, unfortunately, the late snow kind of put a, kind of damp on it. Of course, I heard it snowed in Washington for the cherry festival this year.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't too good for them.
No, I think it's a great project, I do.
So any questions in regards to what we presented?
Mr. Shannon?
This one, Robert. You said you were gonna use the Canadian variety versus the American, is it because the American variety isn't as hardy in zone three as the Canadian?
That is correct. Yeah, yes, well, we, we did some research with the, one of the growers and one of my suppliers, and he said, "Go to the Canadian group, we'd be much happier."
Thank you.
And that way, we wouldn't, it would be a very expensive annual if we didn't pick the right variety.
So as far as the phases there, we were, we were thinking the area, well, it's the Causeway there, so the area where the farmers market is, I think, is where we'd like to start with, and then along both sides of the Causeway, and then perhaps behind the, a road behind the, the bandstand.
And it should, I, we believe it should all be able to be done within a very short period of time.
Right.
So you're thinking that this is gonna be installed by the centennial, which is eight weeks.
No, 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 we can't go with that.
Robert's smiling back there.
Unfortunately, that, that might be a little too aggressive, but maybe we could get one or two in, maybe, a couple test holes, I don't know.
I'll let Robert address that. The size of the trees that we're projecting, again, the city has requirements of sizes of trees that we have to plant, you can't get the USDA whips that they're giving out right now, which are those little twigs, they have their little twigs that takes in the next 10 years before they do anything. The caliber, we're shooting for their inch and three-quarter to two inches in caliber. Okay, the crowns are at least 12, the. Okay, the crowns are at least 12, they're 14 feet tall, with a nice, with a nice big crown to them already. We want to be able to, as you're driving through the causeway, you're sitting in your vehicle, and you can still see underneath the limbs of the tree, you can still see right straight through to the lake. So the aesthetics are still going to be there, but the trees, we're going to let them grow up. And as things mature, we'll keep underlimbing the trees, so we still have plenty to, we're shooting for eight feet underneath. So that way there's, we get away from the plows, the sidewalk plows as well that are taller, so there's no damage, and we shouldn't have any problems. There's a big footprint that's going to grow, it's not these little four foot coffins we have on Main Street. You've got room for these roots to go somewhere else. So they're, the root balls are about 150 to 200 pounds, so they're well-established trees. It's about the same sized tree as the lilacs that we planted on the causeway last, well, last summer. And they, knock on wood, they're all greening up. So we've made the winter so they know they're holding, so that's the size we're looking at.
Yes, I could just add to that, let's see. Oh, they're about $400 each, maybe the price has gone up since we've even talked, I don't know. So it's quite expensive.
I think we're ready to answer any questions.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any other questions from council members?
Robert, what's the canopy on each tree?
Max, the canopy, what's it, between 25 to 30 feet across, by as, about as high. So that's where you can get the effect as that tree is showing, where you can plant these fairly, if you plant them within 20 to 25 feet of each other, they'll grow that canopy effect that they're looking at. And you also can do clumps, you can put two or three of them together if you want a more, a broader effect of these canopies.
So that'll give you an idea of how many trees you're going to acquire.
Correct, yeah. And it looks like on the causeway, we kept looking, I've been walking through, looks like all of what was once there for underground wiring is now, seems to be gone, looks like it's all back overhead. So again, we will still call it DigSafe just to make sure there is nothing there.
Because on one side, you do have the telephone underground.
Yeah, somewheres.
And the vista side, there's a whole fiber telephone underground there. So that's where you got to get DigSafe, just to make sure.
Oh, yeah, I remember, we'll get them there first, we'll post, once we have the go-ahead, we will then select our sites. You'll see great stakes with little orange ribbons on them, that's where the potential trees are going to go. And that way we'll let DigSafe actually see where these trees are going to go, to make sure where we're digging is fine as well as what happens when the tree 10 years from now, 15 years from now. Where will those roof systems go, will it affect their lines?
So I need a motion from the council in a second, and I can open it up to the floor for questions of this. If you still choose to accept this, I think it's a great project to involve the youth and involve-
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum.
A motion's been made, is there a second? Made and seconded, now discussion, any other discussion with council members? You have a question?
I don't know who to answer, I don't know if maybe Robert could. Mike, I tried looking at the map on the side where the sidewalk and train tracks are, are the roots going to affect that?
No, they're not as aggressive as that elm is, as by any means. They're a smaller root, and again, it's an ornamental tree, it's not a big, heavy root tree. So your surface roots will not get as large as those other ones will. So it should not affect any of the city sidewalks or the asshole walkways.
Anything else, any other questions from anyone in the audience?
Just maintenance also, pretty simple on the maintenance, fertilizing once a year. It's four pounds to the caliber inch. As the tree keeps growing, you just increase your slow-release fertilizers. And all that does is just helps keep the food coming to it, so it grows. When the city received its grants, I think it was six or seven years ago, down at the park, we received that huge grant for trees, we planted that size caliber trees all over the place. By us maintaining that fertilizing schedule once a year, those now inch and three quarter, two inch trees are now over eight inches in diameter. So it is effective when you have the right food. And we prove, we do it, every tree probably gets two minutes a year between the fertilizing and the upward pruning, unless something seriously happens to it. So its maintenance is minimal for these guys.
Good.
Unless somebody hits it.
Over here, there was a question.
Yeah, I did. How about spray from salting the roads? Anything like that that's going, are they going to be close enough such that that's going to be?
The trees, if you, if you're going down the road, you'll see that's that patch of grass that is bred by the highway. The acidity will not affect the pH levels or the effectiveness of that tree. It can handle, it is salt tolerant.
Yes.
Well, Robert answered most of my questions. Is it, do they blossom the very first year?
Oh, yes.
They do?
They're probably blossoming now.
And they, are they fast-growing?
They put out there two or three feet a year.
Relatively fast.
Yeah.
Great, anything else, any other questions from anyone? Then all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to this.
So I'll sign this, and then we just need to have-
You'll sign it and give Michelle a copy, because you've got to get it out of there.
Elliot, you sign it. Give it back to us. So let me sign it now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to give you the original. Okay, the next item is recycling, kitchen fee increase differential update. We have, we have Pat Austin here to kind of explain.
Thank you, taking time to-
You've got this package?
Yeah, yeah.
The council, yeah, just the council did receive a packet.
So I'll give you a, I'm going to try to give you a bunch of information if you need to make a informed decision here. And you guys probably don't know a lot about the issue.
You underestimate us.
Well.
Can I, can I just let folks know that Pat Austin's had a relationship with the city for how long?
We've been in business in Newport City for about 32 years.
And, and Pat and Cassell Waste, we all, the three of us work very closely together. Pat is considered a close colleague of the city and has to working on our solid waste. Give you some context, because you have this guy coming up. And I just want you to know that Pat has worked with us closely on our solid waste implementation plan since it went into effect in 2015. He continues to work with us, we are in our own solid waste district. So our criteria is quite stringent. And when new stuff happens or things get implemented to us, as you're, as you're going to learn tonight, Pat is very helpful to keep us aware and let us know what we need to worry about and when we need to worry about. So Pat's been a great ally to the city for a long time. When he phoned to present this latest thing, it's important enough to bring to the council's attention. So that's the context for this, so thank you for that.
So I want to, you guys have all heard of the recycle law that just got passed in 2012, in fact, 2015, Act 148. I want to start by saying that diver, any amount of diversion from land fills a good thing. And any resources that can be captured and reused is a good thing. Some of the things that I might talk about here might make it sound like I agree with some of the diversion, but that's not the case. It's still, it's more the process and how things are being implemented and implemented against the city of Newport. So the recycle law was lobbied for very, very heavily by Chittenden County Solid Waste District. Basically, there's solid waste districts around the state that municipalities can join. And then they kind of, they, they use resources together to provide like recycling centers, like the one in Derby, household hazardous waste days, you guys are lobbying up, so you're your own solid waste district, so you can, you know, you have your own recycling facility. You don't, you don't really share your resources with other areas. You guys are in a unique situation because you're a recycle landfill. So back in 2012, when they were drafting this law, they took a lot of input on it. I was not involved in that until after it got passed, that's when I started to get involved. There was a lot of people that were trying to explain to legislators that they don't want, glass should not be added to the recycle stream, because it contaminates the recycling. It doesn't contaminate it if it's source separated, like you go to one of the Northeast Kingdom District facilities, you notice how they have glass, tin, plastic, cardboard. So they process the material locally in Linenville. It's a little more tedious, but more, more costly and not as convenient as a service. So the recycle law mandated that all solid waste haulers had to pick up, if we picked up solid waste or something, we have to pick up the recycling. It's not really been implemented that way yet, there's a lot of, the biggest problem with that requirement is when I try to force somebody to take my recycling service because I'm picking their garbage up, they can take it to your facility for free. So it creates this avenue for them, you know, they don't want to pay me to take it, which I can understand. But the law says that they're supposed to have the service combined together. So the only way for a solid waste hauler to collect recycling on a scale is the single stream option, which is everything's co-mingled together, and it has to go to a sorting facility, which is called MRF, where they use shakers and air blowers and magnets and sort the material. When you go, when a single stream is a little more contaminated, but like I said, the convenience of it, I think, creates, you know, more people utilizing the system. So Chittenden County lobbied heavily for glass, wanted glass in there. They got it in there. Now we're seeing that what China just implemented is called the National Sort Program, where they're not buying any more recycling material, mainly paper products from domestic markets, unless they can, like, I think it's like a 22% contamination rate, which is impossible. Glass contaminating, it breaks down into like fine, fine pieces, and it gets mixed into the paper and the cardboard, and there's really no way for them to effectively pull it out. So essentially what we've done is we've created a contaminated stream of recycling that is hard to market. So last two years, I've been, well, since 2015, I've testified every year, I've testified twice this year in the House Natural Resources Committee and the Senate Committee to try to help fix some of these requirements for the Northeast Kingdom. Because, you know, they lobbied for this, this type of infrastructure because they have a facility that accepts it. The Chittenden County Solid Waste District owns that facility, and glass is one of the heaviest things that's in the recycling stream. And they really didn't care, there was no way to deal with it, so here we are, we have it in our stream. Now, fast forward to the new recycle, the new recycle markets have been created by China, kind of saying, we're not going to buy anymore. So what it's done is it's flooded all our domestic markets that we send it to, so the prices have tanked. So for our area, the reason I'm coming to see you guys is we, the haulers that service your community, and they have to pass these fees on, they have the highest cost of transportation to get it to the facility. Like I said, the closest one is in Broad, and it's a four and a half hour round trip to go dump the truck. So because of the markets tanking, Chittenden Solid Waste District implemented a rate increase on what they charge the haulers to accept this material. To give you an idea, in 2012, when the law passed, they were charged for $5 a ton for the material. Then by 2015, it had increased to $11 a ton. And July 1st, 2015, the day the recycle law took effect, for haulers, they doubled their rate to 21, which I kind of could see coming, I tried to, you know, when you legislate a certain amount, when you legislate certain material to certain facilities, you don't legislate what them facilities can charge, they kind of got you. So Chittenden Solid Waste District decided to implement a fee increase on any material that was coming from within Chittenden Solid Waste District from $21 to $25 a ton. And anything coming outside of the district goes from $21 to $50 a ton. So what we have essentially now is the haulers in this area are hauling it the furthest distance, and they're paying double what Chittenden Solid Waste District charges for the material. I, believe me, I have hundreds of emails between the manager of Chittenden County Solid Waste District representatives, I've gone and met with the governor, I've met with the government assistant a couple times, I've met with Julie Moore, the agency secretary. There's not a lot they can do on this type of thing, I was trying to get them to, you know, see the broader picture. So I also sit on the board for the Northeast Kingdom Solid Waste District, and that's the letter that you see in your packet that we drafted. There's 49 towns in that, that district, and they supported me animously, sending this letter to the Solid Waste District, Chittenden Solid Waste District, opposing not necessarily the fact that they had to make a rate increase, but the fact that they thought they had to increase it double on areas like ours, or I guess the whole state. But if you get below about the center of the state, they don't go to Chittenden, they go to the different markets, whether it's Massachusetts or Hampshire. We're kind of in an odd place up here in the Northeast Kingdom where we border Canada, so you can't really market material in there as easy as like if you're on Massachusetts border, where they have, if they got MRFs over there, so the competition kind of changes down there. So for your recycle facility down here, this increase is right around 20, if you have, if you generate the same amount of materials you did last year, it costs Newport City $2,644 more this year than it did last year. And for a facility that is in Chittenden County Solid Waste District, their increases for the same amount of material would be $364. This should be concerning to you, but even more than what is happening in that facility, we just, we just set this recycle system up in the Northeast Kingdom. My company has spent over three quarters of a million dollars in investments so that I could provide this service. So I've set up hundreds of customers, and we're providing the service. And now within, within a year or two of setting these people up, I have to go back around and increase their, their costs of the recycling. And believe it or not, there's a lot of people that really think that they are forced into this system. And some, some places it works really easy, and it's, it's easy to provide the service, and the employees are easily adapted to it. But you, I think about a place like, like a motel, or like any bar department complex, which you have a lot of, like any, the rural edge complexes, 99% of the time I send my trash truck to dump the recycling, because it is contaminated by taking down the facility, they're charging more fee on top of that. So the contamination really creates a problem, so we try, we try to offset that. So the point is, these haulers are going to have to pass this on. And I don't know what that's, it's going, I don't know what it's going to do to the hauling community in the area if the Agency of Natural Resources decides to come and start enforcing the requirements that are in Act 148 on the haulers. Like I said, they haven't really done much enforcement yet, because the, the goal for Agency of Natural Resources seems to be to wait until all the requirements are in play and then start enforcing. Because like, I know one of the residents talked about the organics enforcement this law. 2017 haulers are supposed to provide the collection of organics. We got that pushed back to 2018, and right now there's a bill in the House, it's been passed in the Senate, and it's on the House floor, I believe tomorrow, that will push that back to 2020. The Senate's bill removes the hauler requirement. Solid waste haulers are not in the organics business, and we have a really contaminated product because we're hauling it in our garbage trucks, and it's, it's such a live volume. So we're trying to get them to, you know, not force this requirement onto the haulers, because if the haulers can't set up, eventually they're going to have to enforce this, and they're going to shut down haulers. And if you end up with one or two haulers, if you think things are expensive right now, it's, there's really-
It's not like you'd have to have, you'd have to go and buy a $100,000 air cooler or water, just have organic. That's what it sounds like for something forced to-
And then I have to buy all the, you have to buy all the containers, you have to put the containers on site. In the wintertime, they don't dump out, it froze in, you got to swap them out. You have to have a container for sodas there so that they can sprinkle it over it to kill the odor. Creates a carbon base that goes in with the organics. I don't want to get on organics too much right now, because there's not a lot that the city of Newport can do about that, other than maybe reach out to your local representative, you know. You know, I know the comment that was made about the facility in Albany, and ironically, today they had a stakeholders meeting for small facilities such as that one. I don't know all the details on that one, but like a firm that accepts food waste to feed, they're going to be, if this rule gets passed, they're going to be forced to apply for a permit from Natural Resources. And there's a big cost to that, and then there's a big oversight, you know, runoff, all this, so right now. So it's, it's probably going to, I can tell you that the, the company that was at the meeting that's in our area said, if I'm forced to do this, I'm not accepting food. And there's no place for us to go with the food right now. Ironically, Chittenden County Solid Waste District has one of the largest compost facilities in the state, and that's a whole other topic. So, back to the glass. So back to the glass, that we, we totally, um, had this requirement kind of pushed on to everybody in the state. I think there's better ways to deal with glass. I would think a deposit or something like that, but, um, so recently, Chittenden County Solid Waste District was, was, um, issued a ANOAV, which is a Notice of Law violation. Um, while they were lobbying for this type of system, knowing that it was unmarketable, they were actually piling all their crushed glass on a, a closed landfill in Chittenden County. Um, so A and R just, just, um, became aware of it. Apparently you can see this pile of glass on Google Earth. Um, they're, I'm hearing there's forty-five thousand tons of glass. If they have to get, Casella just recently had to get approval from Natural Resources to landfill their glass from the Rutland MRF. So now that glass that comes out of there is going to the landfill up here. They have to use it for road base or ditching, drainage, that type of thing. But they had to do that because the company that they were shipping it to told them, "Okay, what you pay us for it? We don't want the glass anymore. It's, it's useless product. It's nothing but sand. We, it, it is nothing but, it costs more to process it back into a glass." So they've been stoppiling up there and they've also been reporting to, they, to, um, DEC that, that Natural Resources, that they've been using this glass in local projects, which is a criminal offense, was misreporting of that. So one of the bigger problems I'm running into with this violation, I've actually filed some complaints and they're actually going to reassign who's dealing with it because the lady that was in charge of dealing with it was so closely entrenched to the Chittenden County Solid Waste District, um, that I wouldn't have been so comfortable that it was going to come to the, but to, to talk about the scope of what this is, I mean, I'm hearing if they landfilled it, four and a half million dollars in disposal costs and twenty-two-hundred tractor trailer loads to haul it. They have a hundred and twenty days to get rid of it. Um, that cost, I'm afraid they get passed on that because of their mismanagement. Um, so that's why I'm asking the city council to support sending the letter that I put in front of you to, will it make a difference? I don't know, um, but I don't think that, that city council has any skin in the game by sending a message to the Solid Waste District over there saying, you know, this is a, this is bad policy. Um, and, and, and hopefully they'll reconsider. I, I've also heard from my district manager here that there's three other solid waste districts that are also sending, and not, you're an independent solid waste district or a congress solid waste district, we're co-mingled towns. There's three other ones that are sending letters to opposing the rate structure. Um, so I'm kind of looking for your support on, on, uh, on that.
To me, I look at this as block deal. This is the way I look at it. Let's just get everybody outside of Chittenden County. And I look at it this way. They're doubling air rates, maybe, but we have to take all their trash at Casella. That's the way I look at it, is we're getting all their trash, but yet they're blackmailing us for our recyclables. And that to me is just not acceptable. Part of me wishes we could, we, part of me wishes we could put at the corner of Airport Road and Route Five, a weigh tipping station so that every tractor trailer coming in, going to the landfill, has to pay the city of Newport a fee. That would be, that would be nice to kind of send, you know, get a little, get a, because think of the trucks, the number of trucks that go there every day, every day on that road.
So we think a lot alike. And, uh, I'm, I don't want to discuss a lot right now, but I'm working on a couple of things that if it works out, would drastically change the recycling infrastructure in the Northeast Kingdom, um, or force them to reconsider. Um, you know, the, the biggest problem with glass and recyclables, I have, I have found places where I could fail this material and send it to Canada, they don't take it for glass. Um, other states don't take glass. You're only going to go to a place in Florida, they probably don't take glass in states. And you have to loosen the truck, if it breaks in your face, blows up in your face, um, it's just, it, it makes not a lot of sense to have it in that stream. It's really caused a lot of problems. So for me personally, I spent so much time down there trying to make legislative, and I would make them understand what's, what we're going on in the Northeast Kingdom, um, with the, these type of requirements. And then Chittenden County's lobbying powers were derailed out. It didn't matter if it was the right thing for somebody like Tony Klein, um, he would just have to go with, you know, and, and Chittenden always has the political pull, I get it. Um, and, and you're right, that Chittenden doesn't really be us in the Northeast Kingdom for much, other than the landfill. Um, I just, I, I think somehow we need to send a message, not just to Chittenden Solid Waste District, but to the state, that, um, you know, like the organics portion of this law, there's, it's, it's the right thing to do if you can contain the cost of a certain level, is not do it at any cost. I mean, in your backyard or locally, you know, if somebody, if you've got ten neighbors that, you know, they're going to make a compost pile, make some compost out of it. Chittenden Canadian market, they're composting because it's so expensive to make and, and disposable income says that people are going to go buy fertilizer for ten dollars a bag instead of, um, you know, thirty dollars a yard for their organics, their compost. They, Chittenden Solid Waste District had DSM do a study for them on their organics facility because they were subsidized at like three-hundred thousand dollars a year and DSM told them they should shut it and force legislators to reconsider the, the ban. We've asked for variance up here to, to landfill the organics, you know, because they're making electricity with the methane over there. Is it the right thing for the whole state? Probably not. Does it make sense to have the East Side send their material to Chittenden County when it, when, you know, they, they are getting a use of it here? I mean, if there was a, if there's something that comes online that makes it work, yeah, but these, these type of bans just create confusion and anxiety and it all seems to land in my office on the phone. So that's why I've tried to stay so involved, um, you know, the, when I, when I heard about this violation and the way that they were going about things, I just, it just struck me, like, they, they think they're above the law, but they want to force everything on everybody else, you know? So the rate structure, and I also heard today that in September, they're going to increase the rate again for the material, for the recycled materials. So I don't know at what point, I mean, right now, you're going to be paying a hundred and ten dollars a ton for the recycled material that comes out of your facility. It's a hundred dollars a year to the garbage landfill. Like I said, I agree, it's the right thing to do to, to, to grow this material, we need to do it in a fashion that people can afford, you know?
Okay, questions from council members? Any one?
Then, um, I would entertain a motion to authorize me to sign this letter, if you so choose.
Mr. Mayor. Um, yesterday on BPR, there was an excellent program, which was very interesting and at the same time very disturbing, which dealt with this entire problem. So I would certainly approve that we support this letter, um, for this waste district management, uh, problem we're having right now.
Motion made, is there a second?
A second.
May I have a second? Discussion on the motion? Hearing now, is one of you to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your support. Do you remember how things change go forward, like updates?
Want to give them a copy?
Thank you.
I can give this out. This is the original. And, uh, the press is requesting this packet.
Okay, yeah.
So that's your original, I don't have a copy of that. Let me make a copy.
I know you're going to send it over.
Yeah. Give me just a quick second.
Second? Okay. Oh, sorry, Joe.
Oh, no, I said.
You want a copy? Yeah, I saw it, I figured she's going to make one. The only copy I have is the original.
Go and recycle.
Go and recycle. Wait a second. Which woman? Postmark, I mean?
Yes.
Nice.
Oh, okay. I would give credit to.
It's somewhere. It's somewhere.
Thank you.
Thanks.
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 So incredibly effective. So you can't compare it. Eighty-six, eighty-seven, hundred percent. Past integrity, they're all in the, the Wild West District. And Chittenden County has.
Uh, yeah, but they appealed it because now there's nice fancy homes next to it. So that will never be able to happen, even though it's approved.
You don't want to be.
The one in Chittenden County where those fancy homes are next to it, it's all approved as a landfill. But now it'll never get, because I kept appealing the approved. It'll never be approved now. I mean, it'll never be open.
No.
We're going to Burleigh County, that front's coming up.
Well, I suppose we could go on because this one's very straightforward. Tom's here to talk about it. Um, the next one was the authorization to order the Public Works Truck for FY two thousand nineteen. Tom could come up and.
Even.
Good. Now, just before you start, I want you to know, I looked at a picture the other day from nineteen twenty-six and there were fifteen men out there with shovels cleaning the road.
No problem, you going to hire me another fifteen men? The truck might be cheaper. Uh, I'm assuming everybody got the memo from me and Larry Atherton, Public Works. Okay. Um, Larry's was very in-depth about why we would like to purchase the Freightliner and not the International. It was not the little bit. Um, but we have some obvious issues that have been happening the last couple of years with, with the trucks. And as you know, we buy the cab and the chassis separate and then we order, put out a bid for the, the body, plow, the sander, the pumps and everything, uh, actually that truck. We spelt it out pretty well. The internet, the new International we have now, if you were to look at that truck, actually if you're interested, Laura has, I've got some pictures of it. It's, uh, the, the cab is like shoebox. And if you can't see that candy cane in front of you, you have no idea what you're doing. Uh, once you lock onto that candy cane, the only thing holding it to the truck is the two pins at the bottom. Um, and you lower and raise that candy cane according to the road. You never get yourself into a situation where, uh, you can't see it, you lower it too low, it's actually going to come right off the hitch. So it's a, it's been an ongoing issue. This newest truck we have is an International. When we first got that truck, the first week we had it, we had to tow it to Clark's to have it worked on and we had to pay the tow fee, um, even though the truck was under warranty. So we've had various issues with the Internationals and we would very like to go back to a freightliner.
Is this net?
Tom, you said that there were four bids that were sent out and then?
Only two.
Two.
Yep.
Were the other two local or?
No, there's no big, Hayes, Ford's can't meet our specs anymore. They'll jump around, they may come back in a few years, but.
Do they still handle Fords or is it Sterling now?
That I'm not sure.
Um, and those other two bids, you usually do send bids out?
I usually send out four or five bids, I'll contact them beforehand. Obviously, they couldn't meet the spec.
Okay. So on other bids, they have responded in the past? I mean, these, these two don't usually just.
I think the last time I had three bids.
Okay.
But, you know, truck dealers, they fluctuate on how they build their trucks. And, and the one thing about the International, um, our last International is a forty-three-hundred, which is more, as Larry spelt it out, and adds more to the size of what we currently have always, or have always had. Um, they bid seventy-four because they, they are on the state contract pricing. A forty-three-hundred would be more expensive than the freightliner. So they, they kind of play the game a little bit.
Other questions from council members? And the money is in the budget because this is over a two-budget cycle.
Correct.
Any, um, then I would entertain a motion, if you so choose.
I'll make a motion then that we go ahead with Tom's suggestion and order the Charbois Freightliner.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't go anywhere, Tom. Look at your sewer allocations.
Oh. We don't, this is right there.
Yeah.
Okay, we have two sewer allocation requests. The first one, um, is the, the United Church, sixty-three Third Street, and it's for, it's parcel ID one-three-three-one-eight-two, and it's for a daycare. And the estimated flow design would be eight hundred gallons per day. And the fee has been paid. It's like the paperwork, it's also for the water too. Um, the fee has been paid and we have the allocation correct, Tom?
Correct.
So what we would need is a motion for that. I have the check right here. No, it's made to the city of Newport, Dan, don't worry.
I make a motion to approve the wastewater allocation application.
Motion.
For sixty-three Third Street.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Made and seconded? Discussion on that motion?
Just like to thank our new director, Jennifer Bergeron, for getting all that paperwork together.
Anything else? Then all those in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Uh. Or may I just sign this page too, or just that? That's the law.
What does it say?
Says authorize signature.
Who knows now?
I'll sign both just to be safe because it only had the one on the one page, we don't do that. Okay, I'll give that one to you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is for a residence. It's located, it's parcel ID one-oh-seven-zero-one-two. There was a physical address on that one or is that on here?
It's not on.
I don't think he had one yet.
Oh, he doesn't because it's a brand, it's a brand new property, it's a brand new home.
It's a lot on the Bluff Road, uh, just above our pump station.
Oh, okay.
On the sidewalk side.
Yeah, so there, there wouldn't be an, an address yet till they build. Okay. And we have the allocation and we have the check in hand. It's, it's a standard design flow of two-hundred-and-ten gallons of, of allocation. That's why we need a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve wastewater allocation application number P eighteen oh-three.
Yep. So a motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded? Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. I'll give that, that to you. Oops.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Northern Borders Grant Application and EDA Grant Application. Do you just kind of give a brief overview?
Sure. So from time to time, opportunities present themselves where the city couldn't file, um, for some grants and one such opportunity has presented itself, um, with the Northern Borders Regional Commission. Um, this is a project, um, that we would be working with the state of Vermont for the purposes of refurbishing the boardwalk. Doesn't mean that we're going to do anything more than potentially refurbish that boardwalk. And in order to do that, we've, um, met with the state of Vermont. We are, um, eligible to apply for a Northern Borders Grant. The state is not eligible to apply and when we met with, um, the BTS Commissioner, Chris Cole, we were trying to figure out a way to have that boardwalk get in a better condition than it is right now. We think it's going to be very expensive. Doesn't mean that we're going to do anything more than potentially refurbish that boardwalk. And in order to do that, we've met with the State of Vermont. We are eligible to apply for a Northern Borders Grant. The state is not eligible to apply, and when we met with the BTS Commissioner, Chris Cole, we were trying to figure out a way to have that boardwalk get in better condition than it is right now. We think it's going to be very expensive. We believe that we'd be eligible for $250,000. The cash match on 250,000, do you remember?
It would be 20%.
20%. We have a year to come up with that. This would be a partnership with the state, so we do not expect that our taxpayer dollars would be required for the tax match, the tax, the cash match.
Cash match.
Otherwise, we would not believe that that would be a good thing for us to engage in. So right now, this grant is due Friday. I'm looking at Karen, because she and I will be working ferociously on it, assuming that we have council approval to move forward on this. So again, this is a grant to go towards the repair of the boardwalk. All it means is that we would be working with the state to repair that boardwalk. It does not mean anything more than that, so I don't want folks to read too much into this. This is an attempt to be proactive and get that boardwalk into a condition where, you know, we don't want it to go down the tubes any more than it is.
The key is, the state is not eligible to apply. So it was their idea to have the city apply for it, which, if you're eligible to apply for Northern Borders, and the key with Northern Borders is that this is the last year that it's truly Northern Borders. Next year, it opens up to the entire State of Vermont. So that means the pie and the number of applicants, you know, the applicants increases, the pie shrinks. And so this was a result of the meeting that we had with Chris Cole, and actually, the governor was in on that meeting, and they're the ones that recommended having the city apply, because since the state wasn't eligible for that. Questions from council members? I'm gonna hold off since... Any council members, questions?
So I got the impression that the state is willing to do the match.
I got the impression that the state will find the match.
Yes. And we know, yes, that's my impression, too, because I stressed to the governor, we don't even have the match. And I don't really feel we should have a match, because it's the state property. They got that message, that it's not City of Newport property, so our taxpayers shouldn't pay to fix their boardwalk. But this is a good catalyst to help, because they don't have it in their budget either, but they want to see it fixed. Mr. Shinet, you had something? Questions from council members? Then I would entertain a motion on this, and then open it up to the floor for those questions. Anyone so chooses to make the motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. Now a discussion for the council members?
I'm just curious. I know that at times when you've walked on the boardwalk with people, you've talked about the actual structure of the boardwalk, that it was constructed, you know, the pilings weren't done properly. Is this intended to correct that, or you just hoping that the planking and the nails and things like that would be set so they don't hurt people?
This is intended to correct the issue. If you remember when they built the boardwalk, they had to come back. It was built in 1999. In 2003 or '04, they actually, the state came in, they had to lift up the two pavilions and actually drive steel beams and fix the end pitting, because that literally was sinking faster than the rest of the town. There was a study done in 2009 that gave the estimated cost in 2009 from those, what was fixed, east towards Pomelo Park. That is what is looking to be fixed. And it would be fixed according to the engineering study that was done in 2009. But the state has to do some, you know, there's, of course, we all know inflation and everything, so you're gonna have to get the, Karen can answer something.
I was just gonna say that study would be updated with an additional analysis.
Yes. I actually contacted the people who did the study. They gave us a cost of updating the study to bring it from 2009 to 2018 numbers. And the engine, yeah, it's gonna be to do the, what was, it's gonna be doing, what was, it's gonna be repairing it based upon that study.
Okay, so it's not just the surface?
No, no, it's a complete thorough repair. Thank you. Okay.
Wasn't the cost estimate back then over $600,000?
$298,000.
$298 at the time, in 2009?
Right. Right.
Just regarding the match, normally, you, with federal money, you can't match it with other federal money, but this match could be also obtained, if it wasn't done by the state, with another grant, say from USDA. You can match with Northern Borders, federal to federal. So that money should not come up on the taxpayer.
And you do have a year to find the match. You have one year, which they give you that, which is nice. Any other, any other questions? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
I better get back there, because they're ready.
And do the red line. Do the red line this time.
Money cover tearing it down?
Don't know? I'll give it to... Give that to you. Okay, and the next one was an EDA grant?
We have... We have an opportunity to apply for a grant from the Economic Development Administration from the US, through the US Department of Commerce. We are eligible to apply, because we are a municipality, for a grant to help cover the construction costs of the proposed water tower. The project is estimated to cost total, in total, including any land acquisition or administrative expenses and engineering expenses of 3.2 million. This grant that we're applying for would allow us to be eligible to apply for 1.6 million from the EDA. We qualify in a number of factors, including being an economically distressed community. This EDA supports a number of bottom-up strategies that build on our regional assets to spur economic growth and resiliency. They have awarded between 80 and 150 Public Works projects a year. We have a good chance of receiving an award, but of course, with any grant, nothing is guaranteed. The cost share of an EDA grant would be 50% of the total construction cost, and if, if the community chooses to approve the bond, we would bond for the same amount, 1.6 million, which is a significant change from where we were a year ago in our thinking. It's a two-phase application project. We're gonna be applying for Phase One, where we will submit an application, a pre-application. We will get feedback from the person who's assigned to work with us, and if we meet that basic criteria, we'll be invited to apply for the second phase. This, there's no deadline for the submission, so we can file this now. And I would recommend that we take advantage of this opportunity and see where it's gonna go. We do not need a resolution or a vote or anything of that nature, but I wanted to put it on the agenda to bring it to light and to ask the council to vote for the authorization for me to file this grant.
And if by chance we receive the grant, but the bond, and we don't get approval, say for a water tower, we don't have to accept it?
Correct.
We've done that in the past. We've applied for grants, and we've actually turned them back. And so it's not saying that you have to accept it, you have to, but given, given this opportunity, I think it'd be kind of crazy not to apply for this. Any other questions from council members? Not until I have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we go ahead and apply for that grant.
Motion made?
I'll second it.
Say a second? Now a discussion from council members. Anything, then?
With respect to the 1.6 million that the city would then have to ante up, could we still get that loan that was supposed to be a negative 2% loan for the other 1.6 million?
My information is yes, but it's actually a negative 3%, and you have to understand that that's an interest rate, and it could change at any time, but at this moment in time, we have, we've been given information that the negative 3 is still in effect.
So basically, is, so basically, that equals another percent of a grant?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. So you got more work cut out. Okay. Moving on, the next item is downtown designation update. Karen Garrity?
So as you will recall, some of you may not recall it, actually, so I'll go over just briefly. The downtown organization with the city went before the state in February to apply for the designation of the downtown district, which of course is the area that effectively runs from Third Street down Main Street and around the Ponce Way over to almost Union Street. And that designated district gives special benefits for business development, for priority on various grants, and other benefits that come in to play from the state. So it is a state designation. The state requires, so it's a municipal application to allow the municipality to designate, to have this area designated. And then the municipality turns around and appoints an organization to effectively manage the benefits of the district. And that organization is, they appointed, created, actually, and then appointed the Newport City Renaissance Corporation in 2007. That was the first, the application and the designation in 2007. So we are now 10 years into the downtown designation program for Newport. It's, I've done a number of presentations, it's brought substantial benefits to the businesses in to the area, and given our current situation with development, it was voted on back, I believe, November, that we would pursue the designation for the downtown again this year. So we went before the board and did the presentation. We had actually, over the last, the designation is for a five-year period, we had a lot of very good work over the five years. That was done by the organization. A number of large projects, a number of smaller projects. We have lacked for the organization an executive director since 2014. We've had staff positions in the interim, but not a formal executive director for a long period of time. And that, that is tough, because it means the board has absorbed a lot of that work. NVDA has stepped in, in the person of me, to help run the organization and keep it going, because from our perspective as NVDA, it's a very valuable economic development tool, it's a community development tool. And for Newport at this particular point, it's a critical tool for us to be able to access benefits that will help push our development forward. So we were very pleased. Laura and the mayor came as representatives of the city as the applicant. I went representing both NVDA and the downtown organization. We did a great presentation, if I may say so, and the state did approve the re-designation for Newport through 2022, which is terrific. So as you'll recall, back in November, those of you who are here, we had to propose, because we've been without an executive director, and the issue has essentially been, there've been a number of issues, but financing nonprofits, as anybody knows, is a difficult thing. And when you're financing a nonprofit that doesn't produce a revenue stream, it's even more difficult. The city, in terms of its obligation to the organization, is obligated to provide funding to the organization as, as part of the reinvestment into downtown. So that 25,000 that the organization had received for 10 years was increased to $30,000 this year. And that money would go toward hiring an executive director. At that time, because we wanted to hire somebody who could really take on the challenges we faced in 2017, 2018, that we didn't face in 2012, when the designation was given to Newport the last time. In 2012, we applied for the designation right on the heels of the announcements of all the developments that were coming to downtown. So everything looked great. But 2016, 2017 were tough years for Newport, and as we, as I said, we need now a leader in the downtown organization to really be able to take on the work that needs to happen for our downtown. And we need a full-time, dedicated, capable, qualified individual to do that. So you'll recall that we asked the city for an increase to the 30,000 for the allocation that they've been providing each year. We then also asked if 30,000 of the Walmart funds could be used to match that, because we proposed doing a partnership with the city to share a position that would help the capacity in the city to do some of the work beyond the downtown, and for the other half to be the downtown organization. The state, when we presented that as part of our presentation, the state was really not in favor of that. It is meant to be, as I said at the beginning, although it's, it's a city application for the designation, and although the city is required to help provide funds, it's a non-governmental organization. It's meant to be solely non-governmental, so that it can do work that perhaps a government organization couldn't or wouldn't do on behalf. We've had great cooperation, I would say, in the last number of years with the city to move things forward, and we would expect that to go forward. But the truth of the matter is that the state was less than receptive to that arrangement. And, you know, I think we can understand that putting somebody in the position to really have to answer to two taskmasters, one of which is really the political organization that could pull funding if it wanted to, would be kind of a tough position to put people in, too. So the downtown board has been going back and forth with this and meeting a number of times to discuss this, and really came to the decision that we need to find a way to fund this position full-time as solely the downtown organization position, as a full-time executive director just for the downtown organization, which in fact, still builds capacity for the city, because a lot of the work in economic development has to happen within the downtown designation. That's the reality. So what I'm here tonight to let you know is that the board is ready to go forward with the hiring process, but it would, while it would like to express its appreciation for the city for considering the shared position, it's probably not in the best interest of the organization to do it that way, and the state, the state has had a number of comments in that direction. We have to go back in July and do another presentation to them around the management of this position. We had tried for a number of years to merge with the Changer, to share a position there. That was definitely not accepted by the state. We had looked at doing a municipal commission, just rolling everything right back to a very basic structure, and they were really against that, because that takes opportunity away from community members to be involved in a significant way. And so this position, the board has, has decided that it would go forward with hiring a position for the downtown organization that would be solely responsible to reporting to the board. So what that does in coming before the council is going back over our discussion, I believe it was in November when we talked about this, that would effectively leave the 30,000 in place, that was the allocation for the position. But the board has requested that we ask if you would consider allowing the Walmart money to still be applied to that position, even though it's not a shared position with the city. And again, that comes back to your vision of what the funds are to be used for. If and when, and we fully expect to get the right person for this position, that will bring in benefits beyond 30,000 to the downtown, and then to the larger city as well. And so it would help both with funding the position, but also matching grants for going but also matching grants we're going after to use some of that funding for that. But again, that's up to you because that was not part of our original discussion. We thought we had actually found a solution to, you know, the difficulty of financing the position.
And the state got involved. Not involved, but they expressed an extreme displeasure.
Yeah, they were very concerned. And it's not a reflection, it's not a reflection on the council. It's not a reflection on that at all. It's just, they have defined the program to be a non-governmental entity. That, as you know, the downtown organization doesn't report to the city in the sense that it doesn't answer to the city. It doesn't design a strategic plan based on what the city tells it to do. It's an unusual position for an organization to be in, to be appointed by the city, funded by the city, and yet have complete separation from city oversight. And it's that oversight piece that concerned them. And their rationale is simply that, you know, as a community-based organization, it's meant to answer to the community effectively. So there you have it. So I don't know if it's a decision that you want to discuss tonight and make a decision on, or if it's something that you have additional questions about.
Well, uh... It still fits into the use of the Walmart funds based upon the agreement. Because having a person focusing on the downtown, and that's actually in Walmart. The funds were to mitigate the impact of Walmart on downtown and the city of Newport. So it's still, according to the agreement that we signed with the developer, still fits into that.
So the plan that you would have to use those funds would enhance the job of a qualified candidate. So basically, it would potentially bring in a higher caliber. As I understand it, the job demands are going to be quite stringent, the medical demands, the knowledge.
Yeah, exactly. The, you know, the person that we're going to be looking forward, looking for is effectively going to be somebody who has the economic development background. So the board has chosen as its strategy going forward for the foreseeable future to pursue developing around the recreational economy. There's tremendous support in the state for this right now. We have some emerging assets with the Bluffside Farm, the waterfront. We have our beautiful waterfront that we're looking at. We have the Vast Trails, we have our golf course. We have a number of recreational assets, outdoor recreational assets, that what we need to start doing is connecting business development to those assets. And really pursue a coordinated structure, economic structure, around that theme. And we need somebody who has the understanding of how to do that for the downtown and actually for the broader Newport. It will have the larger effect still on Newport. But we need to have the money to pay somebody to bring them in. And we need to have some assurance going forward that it would be more than a nine-to-12-month position. It would be great if we could find somebody right here in Newport who'd have those qualifications to do this. That would be excellent. We may find somebody who'd be coming from a distance and need to relocate here. And, you know, we need some, we need to be able to have some assurance as a nonprofit that we have a funding stream that we can manage, given the salary requirements and given, you know, we have to give them money to work with as well. You know, either fund grants or fund projects and so forth.
This would be used as matches, correct? For some of the grants that...
You can define how it would be used. If the council would be more comfortable saying, "We want this to go toward operational support." That's the tough piece to fund in any nonprofit, is the operational piece. There can be sections of a grant that fund that, but rarely is there an entire grant that's not affiliated to that. That's traditionally what the city allotment has been used for, for the downtown organization.
So basically, you're saying that the model that was originally presented in November doesn't really change but for the focus on economic development outside the downtown.
Right.
So one of the things that was appealing back then was the ability to take some of the demands off that I've been doing in my city manager role, which has been some economic development initiatives. This seems, selfishly speaking, this seems like it's still going to be able to take some of the heat off me.
So what we'll effectively have in town is someone who will be going to the state meetings, the regional meetings, working with state partners, you know, representing solely Newport as the representative of the downtown. But the reality for us is our economic work is, you know, sort of pointed at the downtown for the foreseeable future. And so the city work on that would have also been focused on the downtown. But this person will be writing grants on behalf of the organization and doing a number of things that will help support the efforts, you know, that certainly the city is pursuing. They won't be working for the city, but I would envision this person being working in tandem where it makes sense to do so.
But they would be attending, as you said, these different...
Absolutely.
Like I've attended some, and nobody from your board could go, and you asked me to go because they wanted Newport representation.
It's very, very important to have our representation in a number of groups. There's really some terrific things happening around the state that is garnering funding that we really want to be in front of people and saying, you know, "We're here, this is what we're doing, and you just want that attention on us." And we need somebody who can do this kind of work and work with people and really represent the interests of Newport beyond what the city can do. And so it's certainly not to replace anything that's going on in the city, but it is somebody to run an organization. We will be looking at the committees, the committee work we constitute in those with projects that will support the economic direction that the organization is going in, looking at funding committee projects. And really, you know, the board has worked hard. There've been a number of folks around the state who've worked hard to bring this organization up to what it needs to be for Newport. So what we'd effectively be doing is, again, tonight, launching that job application. I did not want to do anything before I had a chance to chat with you to talk about this decision. It would be fair for you to see something and wonder why you weren't involved. But the hope is that we would launch this application today or tomorrow and do a hiring by mid-June and really have the position starting 1st of July or have a negotiable position. But we start the new fiscal year with at least somebody hired for the position. And then build out from there.
I just want to stress again, it's the state that's driving this, as far as the position. I was at that initial hearing, I got a hearing with the presentation in February. I remember them being very, very hesitant with the model.
Yeah, hesitant, it really did work.
We thought they might go along with it, but then as you further got into it and their board, I guess, have talked, they want to see it completely separate.
It does work. You want the organization to work as well as it can. And I think we're a very small community. I think there's certainly aspects of a shared position we would all agree with and have no problem. But by nature, you know, the city, the council, it's a political organization, and that's the issue. I think that they're concerned with some stalling on development just because it's the nature of what we do. You know, we've worked very well with the city. We have a city member, we have Laura on the board representing the city's interests. I actually think that's very helpful. I think getting that information, knowing upfront, when the board proposes something or council or community members propose something, knowing where the city kind of has maybe issues or limitations with a proposal is very helpful upfront. Because then either it can be worked through, or if it can't be worked through, why go through the motions? So that's been a very fruitful relationship. And we would hope that would continue. They did mention that as well. The state did mention that. But the board has control over who is nominated on the board. And we're looking at the bylaws to see, you know, maybe what we should put in there. The council members certainly attend committee meetings and so forth.
What I was going to say is that when the EB5 news broke in April of 2016, I was already a member of NCRC and really felt that that relationship was mission-critical at that particular point. And I think that drew the work closer together. I think with the Main Street being in the condition that it's in right now, that we don't have a choice but to work together towards that.
There's no question.
You know, and we have to remember, when everything was announced in 2012, that was positive, what we thought was coming, it actually had the effect of stunning the downtown organization and the committees into inaction. Because while there was an assumed cooperation between what was coming and what was here and what could we do as the downtown organization and what could we do as committee members and community members, there was no communication on what that development was going to be and no opportunity for input on what that development would look like. And so over time, you began to see this erosion of the committee structure. And then committee members who were left were frustrated. They were frustrated with perceived inaction. And that was the unintended consequence of that great news. So then in effect, when you had the collapse of the EB5, you actually had an organization that was effectively hollowed out in terms of committee work and so forth. So, you know, there are currents that have kind of carried us to this position and have, you know, required a lot of internal rebuilding. And I think redefining for the community what the downtown organization is. And the educational piece about what it is, why it gets the funding it does, and really what the projects should look like and should result in. So we're looking for a good launch. Come July, we're going to have our annual meeting and looking for a good launch in July. Hope we get the right person. We'll certainly try very hard, and let's see where this takes us. But again, you know, no one's coming to save us. It's got to be our community work, and cooperation is critical. So I'm certainly not here to indicate this is a non, this is not to be no cooperation. The cooperation between the city and the downtown organization and other organizations is really critical to our development because it's up to us. There's no magic bullet here.
Questions?
Just a comment. It's exciting to me to think that the downtown organization is that close to hiring a position.
It's exciting to me, too.
It feels lighter. It feels like the load and that the benefits of the city could be very powerful at a good time, so...
We've taken the steps to build a very strong foundation because it's important that that's there for the community volunteers. For when they come forth with a project and want to work on something and it fits the goals, we have to be able to provide the resources to help that happen. And so that's, you know, that's key. Success breeds success, and that's really what we want.
The downtown group is also going to be like a resource for these other committees through the visit? Are you a resource if the, like, say, a committee had questions? They could go to the downtown group?
Yep, we certainly can be. I mean, those, the groups from the Renewport process certainly are more than welcome to come to the downtown organization. It would actually be ideal if there was some alignment with projects that they're interested in working on. I know there's overlap with projects that are proposed. There are resources that the downtown organization has already created that it has. And so it would be great to have that alignment. But again, that's up to them.
Up to them, but I just thought I see a partnership possibly or downtown as a resource. Because I always look at, why reinvent the wheel if there's been something started or, you know, uncompleted?
Yeah, this program is really, it's really designed to help fund funding and to bring resources and to bring tax credits. And it's really designed specifically for downtown support. And I do get the question on occasion, why is the downtown area so important? But it's because it is really the hub of a community because of the services that are provided here, the retail. We have to look at the fact that, you know, retail, to a great extent, in small bricks-and-mortar stores, is to a large extent heavily challenged. Downtown is a common work experiential. We need to rethink our retail strategy and so forth. So there's a lot of work, you know, before us. Something happened behind me, I should know about it. So everybody looked in one direction, I was like, should I duck?
Any other questions from council members? Go ahead.
Karen, you said that the board, your board, would be in charge of the hiring. Would you need anything from the city council? As far as taking part in any of that, or...
Yeah, I think we'd welcome it. You know, certainly. I'll certainly send you the application. And I think what we'd like to do is, I think while the board would have the final decision, I think it's a good thing to have a broad input, you know, on the hiring because it's a key position in the state. So I think that would certainly be a welcomed, welcome decision.
Okay. Thank you. So as far as the Walmart funding, should we have it on the next agenda, since we're going to be voting? We would probably want to vote in public. Is it okay to wait two weeks for our next agenda? So we can have it formally on the agenda for a formal...
I just want to ask if that, in any way, derails the process?
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
Well, I don't think it'll derail the process. It may impact who we finally choose.
Well, no, I think for a formal vote to allocate the resources to downtown versus the city unless... Did you have something? You raise your hand? Oh, I was just getting ready to raise my hand, go up in the corner of my eye. Sorry. I think probably that won't derail you picking up the ads or anything because we meet, we meet in two weeks, which is the 21st. I would just have it as an agenda item that we could formally have a vote. We don't normally try to vote on things that the night is presented.
Yeah.
But I certainly think it's the ideal use of those funds based upon the agreement we have with the developer and what's there.
Yeah. And I can get you a copy of the job application with the requirements and so forth, so you can see what we're looking for.
Yeah, that would be great.
I think that would be helpful. And, you know, anything else that you might, you might want to see? But I think that will give you a very good sense. I inserted a description that you don't normally see in job descriptions, but it talks about the strategic direction that the board is taking around the recreational economy because we're going to want to get somebody in here who understands what it means to develop something like that in an area like ours. And we have some great opportunities to collaborate with New Hampshire and so forth, so...
Great. Well, thank you for coming. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. I'm wondering if we can also see the bylaws, whether they're current or in process, and also get a current list of board members.
Yep. So the bylaws are, they are what they were as far as I know when they started in 2007. So those wouldn't change, I can get you those. The board is working on those for the... And actually, if you have a copy of the, if you have a copy of the re-designation application, that's all in there. Because that was all part of the application, so that, I think, I think that you...
That's not shared.
But I can get that.
I think it's on our public website, actually.
Yep. So, but that's all there. That hasn't changed. The board has been reviewing the bylaws to see if and when there need to be changes. And if that happens, that would all happen by the annual meeting in June, which we do not have a definite date for yet, but it will be in June.
Okay. Any other questions for Karen? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Moving on. New business. Mr. Johnson? No more licenses that we have to come in? Are they done?
Oh.
Okay. Mr. Charmano? New business? Mine's kind of new old, but the, I should have written it down, but the link was an email, I don't know if it's been posted on the website, Laura, for the Renewport report. Maybe we could put that up there because a report has been sent out. So maybe we could put that on the...
They're supposed to drop some books off, I haven't seen them yet.
Oh, they have dropped, they're going to drop off a hard copy also for anybody...
We're supposed to have a stack here and at the library.
Okay. But I just want to let everyone know that that report has been written by the Vermont Council on Rural Development. And it's been posted, so that's what I had for new business. Any new business?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the, either the Rec Department or the Public Works Department for the work that was done on Farmers America. Your group. Thank you.
That was good use of the new excavator that was purchased. $80,000 of it, out of the whole, we got $80,000 grant to pay for, what, all but what?
$115 total.
$115 total, so out of the $150, the $80,000 grant went towards it. So we got put to right to work.
That was the USDA Community Facilities...
USDA Community Facilities grant.
Yeah, very pleasing.
Yes. Any new business? Anything, Laura?
Nothing.
Okay. Moving.
And we parade.
Oh, we got to do the memorial parade.
Oh, that's right, because I came in after I approved the agenda. So we have to do the Memorial Day Parade event, which is unfortunate, but... Because we tried to have the agenda done by a certain time and this came in unfortunately.
Didn't make the cut.
Didn't make the cut because I...
So this is the annual Memorial Day Parade. It's the, very similar to the children's parade and we're always well versed this time of year from having done that first one. So you can see on the front side, it is for Monday, May 28th. Ten o'clock step off for the parade. Do you want to talk a little bit about it?
It's the normal Memorial Day Parade, what they've prayed and died here at ten o'clock, go over to the park, whatever, short ceremony. Everything's normally done by eleven, ten past eleven, everything's over. Takes about an hour for the whole thing.
Which is on the veterans.
Lots of veterans from the two world wars, Vietnam, Desert Storm.
How many years has this been done?
Been going on forever. I didn't do that for three. It went on for fifty years before that, I think.
It's really a nice ceremony. We do a lot of prep in the memorial park with our landscaping, cleaning. Make it nice for everybody.
Rec works have a lot, podium chairs, speaker system.
So you can see on the backside and that's the invoice that's generated for everyone during...
I can't speak that loud without this microphone, I just have to.
So the American Legion is, I'm assuming, requesting wage fees for all of this amount. We did get approval from our department heads, Public Works, Police and Fire. All said that they were okay with it. So if the council wants to, you could put this through your policy and discuss it.
What's the amount?
With the parade support, which is always a big ticket, the total bill is one thousand six hundred and thirty-two. About a thousand, about eleven hundred dollars of that is the parade support. And that covers staffing for eleven people.
Now, just note the Police Department, the Fire Department are in the parade.
Big driver, right?
They play.
Yeah. And also for the flag.
And other city personnel are in cars.
But the council members are in the parade, right?
Oh, yeah, all the council members will be in the parade. Best of your very finest. Got a car for you, San Antonio. You don't have to always have a big boy in the house.
Okay. Questions from council members on this? I don't even need a motion.
Hey, I'm a nice guy. I make a motion, we waived the fees for the parade. I don't really care where the money comes from.
A motion's been made, is there a second? I'll second. Made and seconded discussion. Any discussion from anyone? Then all those in favor say aye. All those ayes have it, motion carries. Be nice to Mr. Johnson, maybe Mr. Rose.
American Legion, the VFW and all the veterans, past and present, appreciate it.
Is that it for the new business?
That's it for me.
So don't we need a line item? Ideally, thank you for bringing it up.
So, shoot, right. In order to treat these fair and equitable wage...
Council special, less special...
For the field and facility used, there should be a line.
Yes, for everything because we're waiving, it should come out of council special projects.
Yes.
Because we need to track it.
Right.
Even though to me this is something that, this is probably a civic requirement as a municipality versus the other events. I look at Memorial Day, I look at Veterans Day, I look at fourth of July as civic, power of the municipality. And I'm basing that also upon conversations with other communities where they feel civic engagement versus all the other special event requests. That's the way I, that's just some conversations I have. But if you want to track it, council, you could take it out of the council special line item and when it goes negative, it goes negative most years.
Where do we take our money from in the city special event?
That's budgeted. So my suggestion, and this is just food for thought, the parades are obviously the largest ticket item. Field and facility use are peanuts compared to the amount of staff and stuff that's for parades. My suggestion would be to consider, you know, maybe this is a conversation for a different day, but consider parades similar to what we do with the coin drop. The city can take that cost on internally, but maybe put a limit on the number of parades that we're offering to do. Currently, for third-party parades, we have two that come in annually, the children's parade and the memorial. So maybe put a limit of three per year and then it's first come, first served or grandfathered in based on who's been there the longest. And then there's a cap. So annually, we're planning that, we know that we're going to do three. We're not going to charge any line items for that. It's going to be absorbed internally from the different departments. But just put a cap on it so that we don't have fifty parades in town. That's the suggestion there. And then the field and facility use, that's an understood cost of maintenance and maintaining and that should be accounted for in the line items.
I'm sure that's going to come with a budget time. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Another question. How much of this total would be coming out of the special project?
So if you looked at the invoice here, we've got, the very first line is field and facility rentals. So that's a hundred and seventeen. Use of the PA and the podium in the PA system is two hundred. Chairs are sixty dollars and then there's some staffing time for setup and breakdown. That's a hundred. So whatever this equals eventually.
Four seventy-seven? Okay, because you've only got a little under fifteen hundred dollars left in the...
This is, actually, this is this current budget year. So I don't know what we have left in this current budget.
You are over, you have about two hundred and eighty-seven dollars in this current budget year.
Well, we don't have to go negative in that one line item because we got to track it. And we just have to go negative in that line item this year.
And that's how you budget in the future.
Yeah, we just have to budget for it.
Just like a big...
No, I know. Oh, I had that, I knew that we were going to go negative, what we have to account for. It helps with the budgeting next year. It truly...
Well, this will help because we'll know if we're going to do those two parades, we'll remember how much it costs.
Right. And so it'll help with budgeting. And that's why I want to keep track and keep it in the books, you know, so just having you absorb it or the departments absorb it, I want to track it.
Right, that's a wise...
It's a good accounting, it's a good way of accounting and planning for your budget.
It's a wise and responsible choice, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Josh, thanks for sitting down.
Thank you.
Now, moving on, old business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Charbonneau?
Yeah.
Mr. Jevon? I have nothing, anything? Nope, okay.
Oh, I have it. And the water bills are getting mailed out tomorrow. There was a centennial celebration scheduled. We think it's pretty close, but there's a whole back sheet on the back, there's a yellow sheet in there. So everybody in the city will know what's happening.
I'll post it after, after they get mailed. Just keep those page updated. Okay.
Okay. So the next regular council meeting will be May 21st, 2018. The Centennial Planning Committee will be May 17th, 5:00 PM here in the council room. Now, which one of these, one of the...
I'd like to invite Rob Naromore to join us in the session.
Do you have the exact motion somewhere?
Yes, you do. It's attached to the pack, yeah. I think we need Rob Naromore in time.
Yes. I think you have the exact motion.
This is the motion that we'll get to you with me. You got one?
Yes, I got it.
I need my folder back.
Yeah, so we need that motion.
It's the real estate purchase or lease option, 1 VSA 313A2.
I will make the motion for the board's specific finding that premature general public knowledge of the subjects of the anticipated executive session tonight would clearly place the board and or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage. Do we need the step two as well, same time?
Probably, yeah, just read them both as well, just...
Also making a motion to enter executive session with council for confidential attorney-client communications concerning contracts.
But we didn't need that one, I guess, I forgot, I'm sorry.
We just, I'm sorry.
A little withdrawn.
Yeah, we just need the first one.
The 1 VSA 313A2.
Yes, so a motion's been made. Is there a second? Main seconded discussion? We do anticipate a vote on this one, right, Laura?
I think so.
Yes, that's why we have it.
If you would be so kind, thank you for that.
That is seconded, right?
Yes.
That is seconded. So a motion made, a seconded discussion, and all those in favor say aye, claps of aye. Ayes have it.